All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Denfeld. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 2nd meeting of the Edina City Council. It is February 2nd, 2021. It is 7:01 PM. This meeting is being held electronically to comply with the Governor's Stay Safe Minnesota Order and to ensure the safety of all residents and our staff. All members of the city council, staff, and presenters are participating from their homes or offices. Before we begin, then, there's a few things to cover for those listening in and hoping to participate in portions of the meeting. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your input on matters. We've been collecting public input through voicemail and our engagement website, which is bettertogetheredina.org. It's important you all know that all public hearing comments are read before we take action. You do not need to submit the same feedback in another way. All communication is considered equally regardless of the way in which it was submitted. Tonight, there will be only one opportunity for you to call in to provide comment via phone, and that's during community comment. We don't have any public hearing matters this evening. So if you want to call in during the community comment portion of the agenda, remember that you'll be allowed to speak about anything that's not otherwise on tonight's agenda or is a matter scheduled for a future public hearing. I'll give you the phone number now if you want to call in during community comment, and I'll do that again when we get to the community comment portion of the agenda. If you want to call in for community comment, it is 800-374-0221, and the conference ID is 767-890-767...excuse me, 767-6890, 767-6890. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our city manager, Scott Neal, will be doing the timing, and he'll let you know if you go over the three-minute mark so that you need to wrap up your comments. So thanks in advance as we work to conduct this meeting online using different kinds of software and almost 20 people participating from different places to try to make sure that this production goes smoothly. We hope there won't be any issues, of course, but rest assured that if there are, we'll try to get them corrected as soon as we can. So with that, I will call the meeting to order, and I will request a roll call from our clerk, Sharon Allison. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Jackson, I didn't hear you.
Did you hear me now?
Yep. Well, I saw your lips moved. That's good enough. Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I will rise. I think my mic will be the only one turned on during the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a form of agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone on the council or the staff, the city manager, that wishes to amend the agenda in any form or fashion?
No.
Hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda, as shown?
Still moved?
Second.
There's a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton, to approve the meeting agenda, as shown. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the adoption of the meeting agenda. Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The agenda is adopted, as shown, and the next thing on our agenda is community comment. And, of course, we're now going to hear from any residents who would like to speak about something with the council that's not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Remember again to participate in community comment. You want to call 800-374-0221. The conference ID number again, 767-6890, 767-6890. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue that wishes to speak to the council?
Good evening, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. Unfortunately, we don't have anyone on the call, and it does not appear anyone is dialing in. However, because there is a slight delay in the broadcast, I would recommend we wait a minute or so before moving...
Thank you, Director Bennerott.
...just at 7:06, so I will come back to you at 7:07 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
Thank you.
It is now 7:07, and I still don't have anyone on the line, so I think it's safe for you to move forward with your agenda.
All right. Thank you very much. We customarily have the city manager respond to community comments that were made two weeks ago. I think we had one caller regarding the fire stations, as I best recall. And Manager Neal, I don't know if you have that same recollection, but I'll turn it over to you for your response to any community comments from our last city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. That is my recollection, and it's a discussion topic that comes up frequently at community comments, so I thought I would respond to it with a little more detail tonight. In 2019, the city engaged five bugles designed to do a response time and station location study for us, and they did that study, and we received it in January of 2019. So most of the data that they used was 2000...in fact, all the data they used was 2018 data, both in terms of the numbers of runs, activity levels in the fire department, but also traffic, because traffic is a major concern when you think about how long it takes to get an emergency service from a station to a home where it's needed. This study came back with three key recommendations, and I thought I would just share them tonight so that we're on the same understanding and timeline. The most...I think probably the most important statement in this study came on its page 19, which is where we have the conclusions and recommendations, and that is the Edina Fire Department is meeting their currently stated goal of responding to fire and ALS calls in an average time of eight minutes. So that is our service...that's our service goal, and we're meeting that goal. We were meeting that goal in 2019. We're still meeting that goal today. But there were three recommendations that came out of this study. One, recommendation number one, keep existing station number one in its current location, which is an important recommendation because that station is in very good shape. It's in a good spot for servicing the western half of the city. Recommendation number two was construct a new station, a station number two, we call it, because we already have a station number two. So construct a new station, number two, near the southwest corner of the Southdale Center. So when this recommendation was shared with us, it was based on a response time algorithm that took a look at growth, where growth was occurring in the Southdale District, where growth was occurring in northeast Edina as well. But really, it was the optimal spot based on growth patterns and traffic patterns at that time for it to be located, for it to take our station to rebuild it, not where it is right now over in Cirquesies, next to the...on York, excuse me, next to the YMCA, but rebuild it near the southwest corner of Southdale Center, so somewhere in that general area, which is where we've been looking. And that's where this idea came to build a fire station somewhere within the development of the 6600 block of France. So we're still working on that, and the construction of the new station was recommended to be somewhere in the three-to-five-year time period. So if you understand that the study was from 2019, three to five years, is that we should have that fire station built sometime between 2022, next year, and 2024. So in terms of rebuilding our fire stations, our goal, our recommendation from our consultant is not to rebuild station number three, which is the one I'm going to talk to you next, but station number two, rebuild that station in the short timeframe. They also recommended, based on community goal, a new fire station. So, of course, we have two right now. They're recommending a third station, and we'll call that station number three. And their recommendation was that that be in the northeast quadrant of the city, somewhere to the two-to-four acre range, somewhere in the area around City Hall is where they looked initially. So we're looking...we are still looking for sites for that. We've had some additional analysis done on three sites. One of those sites is adjacent to City Hall, and the proposed site plan for the redevelopment of the Perkins area had an impact on that, both a positive and perhaps negative impact on that. So we asked them to take a look at that site again. But the timeframe that they recommended for us to have a new fire station built, fire station three built, was within five to 10 years of 2019. So that's the 2024 to 2029. So because they are looking at that distance in terms of when they did the study and when the fire station three is to be built, we have been prioritizing most of our time in looking at station number two, because that's the one that has the most current timeframe on it. But we are, at the same time, looking at fire station three. They're both important, but in terms of priorities, we're working on station number two, the rebuild first, and then looking for a site for station number three. And those are the two timeframes that we've been working within. Be happy to answer any questions on that if there are any.
Questions with regard to the report out by Manager Neal for comment? All right, very good. I think that was the singular inquiry, wasn't it, from the...
Yes, it was.
...meeting before?
That's all I have. That's right.
All right, very good. Next on the agenda is the city manager performance review. We've had some work being done the last month or so by Dr. Craig Waldron, who's assisted us in this annual review, and we had our closed session earlier during our workshop, which we're allowed to do under Minnesota law to conduct that performance review. And I can and will report out on that performance review from a public standpoint. And I would say that the city manager's performance during the past year has been judged to be excellent by both the city council and also by the directors that work for Manager Neal internally. These interviews are conducted by Dr. Waldron. Topics explored include leadership, organizational culture, employee satisfaction, communication, trust levels, ethics and character, the fact that it was an atypical year, and, of course, we all recognize that from the beginning of the year, when we started to deal with things like COVID and probably in February, certainly by mid-March, and then civil unrest in Minneapolis in June, the election challenges that we had, so many things that took place this year, and I think both with respect to the council and the leadership team of Manager Neal, they all deemed to be...they all deemed his performance to be outstanding. So from leadership standpoint, he conducts himself in an exemplary way. That, of course, leads to a strong belief that folks have trust in him. They trust his ethics. They trust his civility. They trust the character that he has, find that he has very, very high character and excellent on communication with his employees, an employee satisfaction rate that is outstanding. And I think Dr. Waldron found a few places that he goes to where he conducts these kinds of evaluations. Does he find such a high regard for the city manager amongst the staff all the way through our employee corps? So he defines Edina as clearly exemplary in its organization, its council being forward-thinking, and excellent staff led by a very, very capable city manager. So those are some of the higher-level findings that embody the determination that Manager Neal's service during this prior year was excellent. As is our practice, we look each year with a small team, usually the mayor and the mayor pro tem, meet with Manager Neal to discuss his contract and the renewal of the same and any changes we might want to make to that contract. And so I would recommend that we continue that practice and that I would entertain a motion that the mayor and the mayor pro tem be appointed as a subcommittee dealing with compensation relative to the city manager and extending the contract of the city manager under terms and conditions to be approved by the council. But a lot of the subcommittee to engage in the negotiations, that would be a predicate to coming with a recommendation to the council. Is there a motion? Still moved by Member Anderson?
Second.
Second by Member Jackson. Any further discussion with regard to the appointment of the subcommittee to deal with Manager Neal's contract? All right. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison, Clerk Allison, with respect to the motion that is stated.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The motion passes, and Councilmember Staunton and I will meet, and then we will also meet with the city manager and discuss his contract and bring some recommendations back to the city council. So thank you for that. And next, we have a consent agenda with a significant number of items on consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? I think Member Jackson, you wanted to remove a couple items.
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remove items C, E, and G.
C, D...
C as in Carolyn, E as in extra, and G as in good.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anybody else wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, hearing nothing. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of items C, E, and G?
Still moved.
Moved by Member Pierce, second by Member Jackson. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items C, E, and G.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Those items are approved that are on the consent agenda with the exception of items C, E, and G. And back to Member Jackson with respect to item 6C, which is the proposed Resolution 2021-16 Supporting Excel Energy's Integrated Resource Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight this and let people know what was in this Integrated Resource Plan. This is where Excel is moving to 100% carbon-free electricity generation by 2050. They are going to close all of their coal plants by 2030, and the carbon-free energy will be supported by the nuclear plants and also by two natural gas cycling plants, one in Becker and one in Mankato. So there will be reliable energy. So when the sun's not shining or the wind's not blowing, we'll still have energy, and it looks like a really great plan, and I wanted to just highlight how important that is to moving to a carbon-neutral stand in our energy use, because Excel is what serves the city of Edina and all of our residents.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Would you care to move that resolution which supports Excel Energy's Integrated Resource Plan?
I will move the resolution.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Pierce. A motion by Member Jackson to adopt a Resolution 2021-16 which supports Excel Energy's Integrated Resource Plan. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Resolution 2021-16 is adopted. And then, Member Jackson, on to item 6E, which is a request for purchase for G benchmarking for 2021 through 23.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight again the benchmarking ordinance that the city of Edina passed. We began with requiring businesses or buildings, commercial and apartment buildings that were 50,000 square feet and larger, to participate in the benchmarking, energy benchmarking program, and now we're rolling it out to the 25,000-square-foot buildings as well. Overlay Consulting, which is what this item is, is available to help building managers and building owners to figure out how to use this process, and it's a very important part of the benchmarking ordinance, because we want this to be successful for everybody involved.
All right. Would you care to move that matter as well?
I will move this matter as well.
All right. Member Jackson moves this request for purchase of those services to do the building benchmarking in 2021, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Staunton. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the motion.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. The request for purchase of vendor services from Overlay Consulting to do the building benchmarking is approved. And next, Member Jackson was...it is 6G, the request for purchase involving City Hall Asset Management Energy Management Plan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with this, I did have a question for Mr. Milner. I know the City Hall is already being benchmarked through the B3 process, and as we make these energy efficiency changes to City Hall, is there a plan to use benchmarking to show and to track how much energy savings we will get through this improvement to the City Hall?
Yeah, thanks, Member Jackson and members of the council. The contract in front of you today is going to study City Hall and inventory where we could make some savings to the facility, lay out specific projects and what those savings could be in the future. Your reference to B3 since 2010, we have lots and lots of data for City Hall. We also are following that benchmarking ordinance you pulled earlier in the evening. So with lots of data, we just don't have a good way to tell the story. So as part of our climate action plan, and what we're currently doing internally, is trying to tell that story better, get that data organized, and see not only the energy use, but also the cost to use that energy. Then look at deflections in that data to see what did we do in 2018 where it starts to go up or down, what changes to operations, and start to measure and investigate those changes and see how we can continue to drop that energy use while also saving money in the process.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Milner. So I will move the request for purchase for City Hall Asset Management and Energy Management Plan.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Staunton, seconds. The motion is to support a request for purchase from HGA Havelgreen and Abrahamson, requesting description of City Hall Asset Management Energy Management Plan, and the basic notion is to review our assets and associated energy use and come up with some recommended improvements on energy uses. Any further discussion with respect to the motion on 6G? All right, roll call, please, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton? Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Only one other thing that I wanted to bring to folks' attention was, as part of the consent agenda, we passed Resolution 2021-18, which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina, some really generous donations this reporting period for the Arts Center, Kathleen Kane, K-A-N-E, and her family, $10,000 for general use at the Arts Center, which was an extraordinary gift. And then the Edina Garden Council, what a wonderful organization that is, and to the Park and Rec Department, a contribution of $17,960 to help with the construction of the Tranquility Garden pergola that will be over at Artisan Acres. So our special thanks to the Edina Garden Council and the Kathleen Kane family for those generous donations to the city. All right. Next, we're on to special recognitions and presentations, and our city forester Luther Overholt has a matter for us involving Owen Palmer, who's an AmeriCorps member. And City Forester Overholt, are you with us?
I am here. Thank you, Mayor Hovland. And so this is a long overdue. I'm here tonight to introduce Owen Palmer. He is the city's newest AmeriCorps member, and so I actually applied for a grant this past summer and received it, and Owen is part of the newest branch of AmeriCorps programs. It's the Community Forestry Corps, and so he started this October and will be serving here at the city until August. It's been invaluable having him so far. You know, I lose all my seasonal help in October, and so he kind of stepped in at the right time, and he's been helping me a lot with our Emerald Ash Bore management. I just got all the ash trees on city property inventoried last year with a grant from the county, and so Owen's been helping me sort through that, and I'll let Owen kind of introduce himself a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, welcome, and please introduce yourself and tell us how you're enjoying your work.
Okay, yeah, sure, I will. Yeah, so as Luther said, my name's Owen. I am an AmeriCorps member. I actually grew up in the city of Edina, so I went to Edina High School. I graduated in 2015. After that, I went to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, where I graduated with a degree in economics and political science. And then after I graduated, I went and worked at Land O' Lakes in supply chain logistics for a year, and I decided that I wanted to go to law school, and I wanted to go to law school for environmental law, so I wanted to kind of switch gears from supply chain and find something else that was maybe like a good stepping stone into environmental law. So I was looking for AmeriCorps opportunities and kind of just stumbled upon this one by chance, the community forest sector, which is, like Luther said, brand-new this year. And I actually found it on a Facebook ad, because I was looking up so many other AmeriCorps opportunities that I was getting targeted ads for their new programs, and then I ended up a guy, and I've been working here since October, like Luther said, and I'm here for this August, and so far, I've been loving it. You know, in the winter, it's like it gets a little cold doing outside field work, but in the fall and summer, it was quite fun to be out and like planting, especially given the circumstances with COVID and everything.
Well, you're getting a whole new view of your hometown from the work you're doing.
Yeah, it's funny, Luther's talking about how he was glad that I grew up here, because it just makes it easy when he needs me. He's like, go to Coating Park, and I just like know where that is. He doesn't have to like, you know, show me or anything. I just know where to go.
Well, you must be doing a nice job, because Mr. Overholt is giving you some nice compliments this evening, so we're really pleased to have you back in Edina. I'm sure your experience at Madison was a really great one academically and socially as well. So you didn't convert to being a Packer fan, though, did you?
No, I did not.
All right.
I'm probably going to go to the University of Minnesota for law school, so...
Good. Have you applied already?
Yeah, I got in.
Oh, you've been accepted. Sure, you're ready to go. Well, congratulations on that, too. That's a terrific thing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, very, very good. Anybody else have comments for Owen? All right, Mr. Palmer, thanks so much for coming to the meeting this evening and best of luck when you start law school. And we'll see you around as weather gets nicer. See you somewhere. All right, very good. Thanks. And thanks, Mr. Palmer, for bringing Owen over this evening to meet us.
Because the mayor is, after all, the weed inspector, so.
I bet Palmer didn't know that the mayor was the chief weed inspector.
As the weather gets nicer, you'll be working with him.
Yep, they'll see him out there.
Show him his shoulder.
I don't remember who the assistant weed inspector is. If they resign, I'm really done in them.
He hasn't said he's gonna come back this year, so yeah, you might be stuck with it.
Oh, that is Tom Swenson. We'll keep him.
All right, all right. Well, very good. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Overholt, another Edina native, and Mr. Palmer. Good to see you this evening.
Thank you.
We don't have anything in the public hearing portion of the agenda tonight, but we're gonna move on now to our, so we're gonna move on now to reports and recommendations. That portion of the agenda has three matters for us to deal with this evening. And the first matter is one that Director Milner has, which is the potential approval of a right-of-way easement vacation at fifty-nine thirty-two Abbott Avenue South. And Director Milner, do you want to take us through that matter?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. At the last council meeting, I made a presentation on this application to vacate five feet of a ten-foot right-of-way easement along fifty-nine thirty-two Abbott Avenue. We opened up the Better Together webpage to solicit comments, and we didn't have any comments provided by the deadline of noon of last Monday. So I would recommend the council approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twelve, approving the right-of-way easement vacation at fifty-nine thirty-two Abbott Avenue South. I'd stand for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Director Milner on this matter? Would someone care to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, which is the vacation of the drainage and utility easement at fifty-nine thirty-two Abbott Avenue South?
So moved.
Member Anderson moves. Member Pierce seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Kirk Allison, with respect to the motion as stated.
Councilmember Staunton.
Hi.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Jackson.
Hi.
Councilmember Pierce.
Hi.
Mayor Hovland.
Hi. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, vacating the drainage and utility easement at fifty-nine thirty-two Abbott Avenue South is adopted. All right, thank you. Director Milner, we appreciate you being here with us this evening. And then Director Teague has the next two matters in sequence here, which are a couple of sketch plan reviews. One for forty-six sixty seventy-seven Street West, which is part of Pentagon Park, and then forty forty West Seventieth Street, and forty-six, forty-six sixty seventy-seven Street West is first. Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As you know, with sketch plans, you're asked to provide non-binding feedback on a potential future redevelopment application. With this project, the applicant is proposing a five-to-six-story apartment. There's four hundred and four units. This is in the Pentagon Park area, Pentagon Park North. Before I bring on the applicant, just to give you a little history of some of the zoning and development requests that have happened on this site over the last ten, twelve years, we've had a couple of rezonings or a couple of development proposals that didn't move forward. Back in two thousand and eight, the site was rezoned to its current zoning of MDD six, which is a mixed development district. At that time, it was contemplated for residential housing on the north side of Seventy-seventh in the Pentagon Park area. And then the Pentagon Park South site that eventually is undergoing under some redevelopment was part of that project as well. It was anticipated for office and a hotel. Those plans were provided in your packet. That project did not move forward in two thousand and eight, but we do have this overall development plan that was approved as part of the rezoning, and it did contemplate housing on this site. As some of the council recalls, back in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and seventeen, we had another residential request on the, on the subject property that we're looking at, but ultimately, that planned unit development request was denied. Mick Johnson has provided a review, our consultant for the Southdale District. Generally, he's in favorable of the projects with the recommendation that we improve some of those connections from Seventy-seventh to sidewalk to the park area to the north. He believes in general, providing residential uses within this area will add vibrancy to the neighborhood. So with that, I will introduce Kurt Gunsbury of Solheim Properties. He will introduce the project and his project team and give the council the details of the project. With that, I'll turn it over to Kurt.
All right. Thank you so much, Kerry. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Gunsbury. We can hear you just fine.
Great, thank you, Mayor Hovland. Well, good evening, council members and Mayor Hovland. As Kerry said, I'm Kurt Gunsbury. I'm the owner of Solheim Companies. And we've built over two thousand apartments in the past ten or so years. We develop, we manage, and we own the apartments primarily in Minneapolis. This is actually our first project outside of the city of Minneapolis. Jason, our vice president of development, is sharing some images of some of the projects that we've done in the past, just to give you a little bit more entertainment than looking at me. Our, our grand promise is that we build beautiful, sustainable communities that people love. We specialize in creating really memorable buildings that are typically on very complex locations where other developers have struggled. They may have environmental problems. They may have interaction with the street problems. They might otherwise have history that is, simply makes them undevelopable. We've been partnering with BKV Architects and Mike Kritsch, Mike will be speaking, Mike Kritsch will be speaking later this evening. And we've also been working with Hillcrest, the current owner of the site, who has been working with the Pentagon Park site for many years now. We are really seeking to revitalize great urban locations like Pentagon Park, and we look forward to doing so on this site. I'd like Christina Smitten from Hillcrest to spend just a couple minutes talking about the history of the project, and then she's gonna turn it back to me to talk about why we're doing this. Go ahead, Christina.
Very good, Mr. Gunsbury. Yes. Ms. Smitten, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the city council. Director Teague, thanks for that quick intro. I'll also be quick, but we thought it'd be beneficial if I did provide a little bit of context. Thank you, Mike, for pulling up the slides. Again, Christina Smitten with Hillcrest Development. And Hillcrest began acquiring the Pentagon Park properties around twenty-twelve-ish, twenty-twelve to twenty-fourteen. And those properties include the twelve acres on the south side of West Seventy-seventh, the purple area, that's Pentagon Village. Just across the street is about a two-acre parcel. And then, Mike, if you want to go to the next slide, please. The area of focus tonight is really in the orange, and that's referred to as forty-six forty and forty-six sixty buildings. It's about a five-acre parcel. Those buildings, those two buildings have not been improved, they haven't been renovated. But the other seven buildings just east of there in the red area, Mike, you can keep going, those have had significant investment over the last couple of years for commercial use. We've made exterior improvements to patio spaces and parking configurations. We've enhanced the entrances of those buildings and the entrance areas, created amenity spaces for our tenants, a training room, bike locker room. We have a sun deck. Oh, this one is actually tenant spaces that have modernized the interior of the mid-century buildings. And here is the sun deck that I was gonna mention, and maybe some of you have been there. It's an indoor-outdoor space in the forty-five fifty building that is replicable in the other buildings. But just showing you these, as we have made significant investment for the commercial use of those properties, and we envision that in the long term. We're excited about Solheim's proposal next to us. We do think residential is a good fit in the area. It'll be compatible with our commercial uses, as well as the Fred and Pentagon Village and really the West Seventy-seventh corridor. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Kurt. But Mayor Hovland and city council members, I did just want to provide a little bit of background there and let you know that, of course, I'll be available through the evening to answer any other questions that you may have.
Very good. Thanks, Ms. Smitten. Thanks, Mr. Gunsbury.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Hovland. So just in anticipation of what we're planning to present, this is truly a sketch plan, and it's really in the rawest form. The reason we're presenting in a raw form is probably the most complicated aspects of this site are how it connects to the park and how it connects to the existing uses along Seventy-seventh Street. So while we're presenting a form that appears to be like a bunch of white boxes, which it really is when you'll see it, what we're really concerned about from, for you to comment on is how we connect to the park and how we interact with Seventy-seventh Street and the neighbors. As Christina said, housing is clearly a complementary use in this area. It's been anticipated for many years that housing would be added here. We see many opportunities to connect the green space of the park with our housing and thereby also provide connections to the other office uses and extended uses down Seventy-seventh Street. We're confident that we can make meaningful connections for future residents at our development and for the people working at Pentagon Park. So for, for the Pentagon Park team, the use of, of this space long-term is well-understood. It's clearly office right now. Lots of office space, lots of parking, acres and acres of asphalt, as you're familiar with. But we really look at, at the site and we say, wow, what, what an amazing connection to this park that we have. And imagine if we can put all these apartments here and add four, five, six hundred people adjacent to a park. That is what really attracted Solheim to the site, so that we can do what we do really well, which is sustainable, long-term development that really makes great spaces for people to live in. The, the FAR, the floor area ratio, the setbacks, the height, the parking, at this point, we find that they're all very much conforming with the guidance from city staff and the city staff consultants. There's, there's probably some discussion around the edges of what conforming might be, but very much we're on the same page. We really see our plan as a modification of an old draft PUD that really better aligns with current and future comprehensive plans for the, plan goals for the area. Specifically, again, how do we connect to the park? We're also working within the guidelines of the Greater Southdale District Plan, which is intended to coordinate development throughout this area, I think both for transit and for park use, and of course, for long-term development of the property tax base in the area. We've, we've read through Mick Johnson's letter, which was very clearly laid out and which we very much agree with. I, I think the big question for the council to consider is this tension that we have between parking and green space. How do we provide sufficient parking for four hundred apartments and still provide these great connections to the park that all of us want? What we've come up with is a plan that digs down as far as we can to just above the water table to provide underground parking and then builds up the grade a bit to include parking above grade within a berm or a hill that will appear to be a natural space to anybody passing by, but will hide a lot of our parking. We've managed to fit over five hundred parking stalls in the project, again, conforming with city guidelines. As a company, we talk a lot about sustainability, and we also do a lot about sustainability. We've independently built over six megawatts of solar panels in the state of Minnesota, which provides electricity for about three thousand homes. That's a lot of solar. We really believe in, in sustainability. We apply it also in best management practices for water use on the site and, of course, throughout the design of the interiors of our building. There, there are some very specific bullet points I wanted to point out from the planning commission meeting before I hand off to Mike. They, they gave us very, very thoughtful feedback about different aspects of the plan, and we were very much interested to hear the feedback. So here's a quick summary. Along Seventy-seventh Street, the facade of the building that we've shown is clearly pretty blank because it's a big white box, like I said. What, what they'd like to see, and of course, what Mick would like to see, and we'd like to see too, is more articulated planes for the building, more separate facades, creating a rhythm along Seventy-seventh Street. They'd also say, like to see how we can better manage our entry points to the park. And specific feedback was, can we add a west-side entry point to the park? Yes, we absolutely can. Can we enhance our east-side entry point to the park? Absolutely. As you'll see in the plans, we plan to add a bridge over the creek, which will provide an immediate access point for this neighborhood to access the park. But we also plan to add more inviting moments of benches, buffers with trees, water features, pollinator gardens, things like that that make the environment much more friendly to people, to critters, to the future, to the climate. The affordable housing question was another one that came up. We are currently planning to follow Edina City guidelines for affordable housing. On top of that, you should know that our housing is of a smaller footprint type than what's typical for the city of Edina. This allows us to really deliver housing that's more in the eighty, call it seventy to ninety percent of AMI. If you're not fully familiar with AMI, think of AMI as a bell curve. A hundred percent of AMI is right smack in the middle. We're delivering housing that's really for the bottom of the middle class, top part of the lower class. That's kind of the sweet spot for what we develop, and it'll be a natural part of our development. Call it naturally occurring affordable housing, if you would. But we're very much adding to the housing stock of Edina in the areas where it's most needed. We, we also heard from the planning commission that they'd like to see us develop basically a sustainability checklist, if you would, which I think is a great idea. And we, we integrate sustainability into all that we do. We've done gold LEED certified buildings, including the first multifamily gold LEED certified building in Minnesota. But we also, we also take it a step forward to figure out, well, how does LEED apply to the Minnesota environment? What are things that we have to do to make a better fit behavioral uses of our tenants? What we're planning to do with, as we present further at our next round, not this round, but bring about a checklist that talks about best practices for stormwater management, which would include, which would include things like swales, roof ponding, deeper setbacks at the creek to protect water quality from runoff, energy conservation targets. We typically deliver our energy package at about forty percent below the current energy requirements, which is a really amazing accomplishment. The XL is always blown away by how well we do at that on our buildings, but we'll present that within a checklist to you guys. We plan to add roof gardens. And probably most importantly, we're planning to remove a lot of asphalt and impermeable surface on the site, which Mike will explain further. This will allow the soil to absorb rainwater that can actually eventually reach the aquifer. It'll basically be returning a significant portion of the site to a more natural state. We also plan to allow for ways to, to have our residents engage daily with the park. How do we set up the best way for people to store their bikes? How do we maybe have a skating bank in our building, you know, skates available? Jason, you can talk more about that one later. Do we need to provide skis? We've seen projects that provide paddling opportunities, like kayaks. Is that something that can work here? Perhaps more importantly, long-term, we plan to do significant stream bank restoration with our building plans. We'll be adding native plants in lieu of turf grass. Additionally, we'll be having best practices for waste stream management within the building for both organics recycling and regular recycling. And something you should know about what we do in the interiors of our apartments is we don't use carpeting. We actually prefer allergen-free apartments, which allow lots of people who can't live in traditional apartment housing to live in the housing that we build. We include dual, dual flush toilets, low VOC paints. And again, we work a lot with the sun. We try to design our building in a way that can provide passive solar in the wintertime and, if possible, active solar in the summer. Just as an aside on solar, we don't think this building is a great candidate for solar. It steps down to the north significantly from six stories to five stories to four stories. And if you know anything about solar panels, they need sun in order to produce energy. And that's gonna be very hard for us to achieve economically on this site. With that, I'd like to hand the baton over to Mike Kritsch, our architect. Thank you for listening.
All right. Can everybody hear me?
Can. Go ahead.
Okay, finally. Last time, we had a little, little bit of an issue. So good evening, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. Happy Groundhog's Day. I just wanted to let you know, my name is Mike Kritsch. I'm a partner with BKV Group. We've been around for over forty years. I've been with that company for thirty-two years. Uh, practicing in, in multifamily housing as well as government work. Um, and I'm very excited to be here tonight. Uh, and working with Kurt and his team, we're very excited to. Uh, try to continue to build on Edina's legacy of great projects and. Um, I've personally had the privilege of, of working with the city of Edina on several other. Uh, projects within the city, uh, one Southdale Place at Southdale Mall. As well as the Edina City Hall and Police Facility, among others. And so, again, thank you for uh letting me present tonight here. Um, I want to just move, I'll move through this rather quickly. There we go. Uh, I, our approach uh before we start a project, and, and this is no different, is to really understand how. Our, what we're trying to do and what, what Kurt and his team are trying to do, how they marry up with. Uh, Edina and their comprehensive plan and the strategies for their various neighborhoods. And so. Um, we like to take a step back and understand elements of the, this comp plan and. Uh, for this particular site, this, this site falls within the Greater South, uh, Southdale District. And so. Uh, this is a long list of items that list some of the district goals. I'm not going to go through each one of these items. But there are important topics that, that we want to make sure we're integrating into the, into our project as we move along and progress the design. Such as creating unique experiences, uh, creating pattern and connectivity, understanding the proper scale and form. Uh, creating great place making and really valuing and, and. Um, instilling sustainability and resilience within our designs. And those marry up. Uh, completely with Solheim's uh goals for what they do with every project. Um, additionally, the site goals at, at our location as well, uh, to create. Connected and integrated and pedestrian-friendly spaces is at the heart of what we're trying to do at this site. Um, this table represents some of the uh zoning information. I'm not going to go over that in detail. Uh, as Kurt mentioned, we're trying to really fit and be in sync with, with the guidelines. Um, our, our setbacks are actually greater than, than what the um minimums are. And this will provide us the flexibility that we want to have to be able to create these great. Uh, pedestrian places in spaces that provide connectivity uh along West Seventy Seventh to the park. And being able to uh entertain that through public places as well. Um, the, at the bottom of this chart here i- is one of the features that Kurt described. And the current diagram on the left represents the existing conditions, which is at about a twenty-four percent permeability. So the site really is made up of a, a large surface park asphalt parking lot. As well as the building itself. And so there's not a lot left related to green space and how does that relate to. Uh, what we're trying to do to uh better our environment. And, and our proposal tries to significantly improve upon that. And so the current design is roughly at about a forty-five percent permeability. So. Um, we're going to try, try to continue to improve upon that. We're trying to fit all our parking. As much as we can underneath the footprint of the building itself to leave as much green space, open space, permeable space as possible. Uh, again, our site is located along West Seventy Seventh between Highway One Hundred and France Avenue. Uh, and um, what we wanted to show and we didn't actually show this. Uh, well enough at the uh planning commission last week, but we thought it was important just to illustrate what the current conditions are. And uh, the image on the left shows our site in the middle of all of this. It's about a five hundred foot by five hundred foot parcel. Between uh office complex to the west, uh, surrounded by uh parking as well as office complex on the right as well. And, and so I think that's important. The depth from West Seventy Seventh to the park is again five hundred feet. The image on the above, the above right image shows the view looking east down West Seventy Seventh. And so that's one of the focus areas of, of our design is to enhance that pedestrian quality and character. The image in the middle is a, a shot between the existing building and the building, the office building that will be staying to the left. And showcases that distance to the park. And so there, there were discussions uh last week. With planning commission that we wanted to really understand and listen to. And there was this discussion about. Be, seeing the park and making sure it's visible. And I think. Part of what we want to just make sure we understand, and again, it's five hundred feet, you can see trees in the, in the distance. But you're not necessarily seeing the park itself. And I, I think what we took away from that is. What's really important is the experience and the journey of getting from West Seventy Seventh. To the park itself. And once you arrive at the park, you're, you're there. But it's that journey and creating the best experience possible. Um, to get to that, uh, and, and that's what we'll focus on as we evolve the design. And then the bottom image again is, is as we move further east and, and again, that distance. This also shows more importantly, the, the grade elevation differences. Um, and there's. Uh, at a minimum, a ten-foot grade diff- difference from the street edge up to the middle of the site. And so that topography is a, an important element of what we're trying to deal with, with our design. Uh, as discussed, this shows the diagram of our proposed site, uh, with our site in the middle here. And there are three really, I think, overriding principles that we want to really establish and, and create. Um, and one in creating a U-shaped building, there, there are three major elements. One is really activating the streetscape along West Seventy Seventh. Um, and activating that and, and improving upon what, um, what will, we think can be a great street experience. Uh, the connection itself from West Seventy Seventh to the park. And having that be a green experience for all the things Kurt talked about. Um. And then embracing the park itself. And with the orientation and configuration of our building. We're really wanting to allow and bring in the park itself within and into our development. Um, this diagram here shows uh just some of the features that we think are important to, to our plan. Uh, the main orientation is a U-shaped configuration that opens up to the park itself. So we have the narrowest part of our building fronting the park itself and letting the majority of the open space. Embrace the park and, and again, blur the lines between where park ends and where our courtyard begins. Having the narrow faces of our building there, we think has the least impact to the. Uh, users of the park and the residents across, across the way. Um, and so we think that's important in terms of this. And then our, our, our building steps from. Four stories up to five stories to six stories along West Seventy Seventh. And it also kind of cascades back and widens the space along the east and west sides as well. And so those are important features as we look to really improve the pedestrian connections along the east side as well as on the west side. Um, and then some of the images around here show some of the features that we really want to uh study and engage and incorporate. Uh, whether it's uh, uh, plazas, uh, uh, fitness areas. Um, public bridges that will connect across the, the creek to, to the uh park pathways and bike paths. Having features for, for pets, again, enhanced pedestrian ways. Again, that experience of getting to the park, we see is really important. The, this, the front door of our project is fifty fi- fifty-five feet in width. We have a lot of room to really create more of this urban setting. So there's this contrast of more of the urban setting along West Seventy Seventh and then the park-like setting uh on the north side. And we want to embrace both. We think they're very different and our design will evolve to reflect that. Um, as we move to some of the exxonometrics, I think these are. Um, good to show just the scale and form of our building. Uh, this image in the upper left, for example, shows the six stories. Fronting along West Seventy Seventh. We have fifty-five feet here in width. The majority of our parking is buried. We have a, we have a small portion up front that is not at the moment, but we're. We're going to study how we use the earth, uh, topography to either bury or hide or, or create. Ingenious ways to make this uh an inviting place. The, the place out in front here is. You know, well over twenty or twenty-five feet wide. And we think that can be a, a nice pedestrian experience. The grade itself traverses up again to bury most of the parking. So you're arriving at this port cochere in the middle. Um, and that allows for, for access and separation from West Seventy Seventh to our arrival court. The building itself along West Seventy Seventh, as, as Kurt mentioned, um, this is just a massing model. It doesn't show a lot of the things that we'll use uh to make this really inviting, exciting, unique, friendly. Such as alternating the forms, um, adding balconies in key locations. Um, creating a play on the materials that we use, creating undulations within the facade. And understanding windows and fenestration. And all of those will be part of our exploration. The building itself in three dimensions also undulates, uh, undulates as it travels towards the park. Again, this, this shows the idea of creating a strong pedestrian connection. We have a ways to go to develop that, but that's important. The image on the upper right shows the west side. Again, with the feedback from the planning commission, we're going to rethink this whole thing to, so that that also is a pedestrian connection that's workable. And then the bottom two exxonometric uh images just show the, the courtyard opening to the park and vice versa. Inviting that into the space. Um, this, this next image just is a cut through the middle of the building showcasing. Again, the parking in red that where most of it is buried. And um, then we do have amenity spaces at that top level in red that connect from the front side through to our courtyard side and then housing above. Again, this section down below here in the middle, our, our highest portion of the building is closest to West Seventy Seventh. And then the building cascades and steps down to five stories and then four stories at the end to mitigate the, the height as it approaches the park. And then the bottom image shows the true scale from our building across the park to, to residences. And with that, I, I think I will um hang it up here and turn it back to Kurt and the rest of the group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Back to Mr. Gunsbury.
Thank you, Mike. So I think what we have now, Mayor Hovland and council members, is just questions for you. Um, what do you want to see here? Uh, what, what ideas do you have or concerns do you have about our connectivity to the park? Um, what concerns do you have about Seventy Seventh Street in particular, perhaps? Um, one of my, one of my questions is, if I'm going to live in this building, how are you going to make this park a more inviting place? Because it's an amazing space, but it's not very well developed. Um, and with that, I'll turn it over to um. To the Edina team for questions. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Gunsbury. Uh, Member Pierce, would you care to go first? Would you care to lead us off?
Uh, sure. Thank you, uh, Mayor Hovland. Um, so there are a couple of things on here. I, you know, I'd start with, um, I think that your plan. Um, you've clearly been thinking through how to use the green spaces. Um, I like the idea that you're thinking about how to integrate uh the usage of the park. Uh, those are things that uh many of our residents, um, um, are get, are excited about. Uh, lots of green spaces, inviting for pedestrians and what have you. Um, I also like the step-down effect that you have as you're, if you're on Seventy Seventh as you approach the park. Um, I do think that that is um a very creative way to minimize this, this. Uh, feeling if you're in the park that there's this huge tower um that's approaching you. And so I do like that idea. Um, I, I wasn't impressed with some of your sustainability. Um, that definitely is a big plus. Um, you mentioned that this isn't the best site for use of solar. Uh, but you did talk about ways to enhance sustainability inside the building, your usage of water. Uh, you'd still be able to use natural light um to enhance sustainability, some of the materials that you might use. I think all of those are very good um enhancements um as well. Um, there are, um, I, I'd also credit the fact that you, when you look at the guidelines and the setbacks. Um, that for the most part, you're meeting um all of those. Um, and to be honest, that's not necessarily always the case uh with developers. But in some cases, you're exceed, you may be even exceeding those. Uh, the only question that, that I had. Um, and it's, it's, I'll express it as a concern. Um, but I'm not an expert, uh, so I will express this as a concern. Uh, when you talked about parking, uh, for other plans that we've looked at, that has been a challenge. And to hear you say you do have below-grade parking. And you're going to dig down to just above the water table so that you can put. Uh, um, some of the parking um underground below grade. Um, I think that that is, is noble, uh, for sure. Uh, but as we know, over time, our water table is continuing to rise. And so that gives me a little bit of pause for a concern, probably not in the near term. Um, but that would be the one thing that I would for sure, um, want to make sure that. Uh, our staff has, takes a look at, um, ensuring that with that concept. Uh, that we don't um end up with a lot of uh water issues um in the way that we would manage that. Um, I think, um, yeah, I think that, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Pierce. And I'll go next to Member Anderson.
Yes, thank you. Um, okay, Mr. Gunsbury, uh, I just want to commend you. You've done a very nice job and hit a lot of the high notes here. Um, your eighty percent A M I uh business model, I think, is um extremely attractive. You, uh, I'm not quite sure how you're going to accomplish that, but uh, um, I'm, I'm pulling for you. Uh, it's a legitimate affordable housing classification. And um, it will tie into the affordable housing goals of the city. So, um, good thinking on that. Um, I, I, I'm hearing you address many of the concerns that the planning commission brought forward to you. Um, then that, I, I, have you done any design progress or made any design progress from that? Or you're in the process of evaluating and implementing?
Uh, we're definitely in the process of evaluating and we were waiting until we got council feedback because we only met with the planning commission last week. So it allows us to kind of incorporate all those voices together for our next round of design changes.
Great, great. Thank you. Um, so the, you're, you're giving attention to the west side approach to the park. I'm hearing that. I think that's important. Um, I, I don't know what's coming down the, the line. Um, and so, you know, the main access there, uh, it may be in, at least in the short term. That this project is going to provide access to the park from Seventy Seventh. Uh, you know, we don't, we haven't achieved anything more yet. And I think uh, that the rest of that is a ways out, feels like it. Um, you're, the, the, the U-shaped design that faces the park is, is really quite exemplary. So I congratulate you on that as well. Um, on the east side, uh, stopping points along the way there could be useful. Uh, I wouldn't necessarily address it as the potential for gathering points, but stop points. Um, people will be coming along. There's going to be people coming in and out of the park. Um, I'm not, I'm, I'm hearing you talk about the bridge and access to the bike path. So what, of course, that'll entail is people are being coming over that bridge and approaching. And you'd like to direct them around in some way. So I think that, you know, you want to give that some consideration. So I think that, you know, you want to give that some consideration along, especially, I think, on the, on the east side, that seems most logical. The, the, the four-hundred-foot street wall is a challenge for you, I know. And the elevation at Seventy-Seventh will continue to present design concerns. How you do that will be of great interest. I, I heard a discussion of glass, a lot of glass, see-through, of course, you know, that's typical in there. How you, how you break that space up from that great four-hundred-foot expanse is, is going to really be a, it's going to be a challenge for you. You've done a great job in the rear, and so now the statement on Seventy-Seventh is, is a, you know, so, so I, and, and when, as I think of it, I think, as a matter of fact, Commissioner Miranda discussed the sidewalk and your drop point and the traffic that that generates, the kind of congestion points in there are pieces. You'll solve that in some way as to how you bring the sidewalk in, but, you know, with the number of units that you're suggesting and the traffic that could be coming in and out of there, that is, as, as pedestrians move across there or bikers try to get to the, to the path on the, on the south side, then that's, if that's going to be a continuing concern in here, and I know you're thinking about it, so I don't want to belabor that. I, I thought that Commissioner Agnew's use of the term iconic or the potential for iconic at your, at your entry was, that was a good suggestion. Because I think you've got, you've got the potential for a great building and a great project, and that, that piece right there is going to define it, though, for everybody driving by, everybody coming off One Hundred as, as Pentagon South flushes out in the future, the traffic that's generated there, that your building is going to be the one that's going to be most notable and most visible right there in that site. The exterior of the existing buildings, they're, you know, they're, people are used to seeing those, and there's, you know, they've been there for a long time. It has a very, people are used to that. Your building is going to strike the note there. So I'm, I'm trusting that you're, that you'll come up with something there. I think that, that's really what I have. I, I know that you're planning, I know that you intend to, to meet the affordable housing policy guidelines for the city, and you're, you've got to start at eighty percent AMI. Of course, you know what the, I heard you go through the options that you have the other night. So I'm sure that you'll find a way to approach that, that meets your business model. And also just want to note your, your increased permeability on site. It's striking. You've, you've doubled it. And so I think that's appreciated as well. So thank you for all your work so far.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Member Anderson. And next, Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to commend you guys for working well with our comprehensive plan. I really appreciate you using that as your reference from the beginning. That means a lot. I have one comment about affordable housing. This is such a fantastic site for families. I hope you will consider having some three- and four-bedroom units for families with multiple kids. I think it would just be a lovely place to raise kids. You've got that park and all this green space, and so that's one thing that we don't see nearly enough of, are some of those larger units for, for families. I'd like to see, Mr. Crutch, on your slide number five, I have some questions about how walking around this building would look like. I don't know if you can pull that up, but I noticed there's an indentation between the, the six stories and the five stories. Is that something that you can walk from the west side to the east side? So if I were to work in Ms. Mittens' building, yeah, there it is, in this northwest building, can I walk through there and then go across to the building to the east? Or would I have to go all the way down to the street and across? Is that a walkway or what is that?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Jackson. What we are exploring here is, because this is a large building, we are looking at ways to break down the scale of it, and we are, in fact, at these junctures, pulling the building apart to create connections just at the corridor, and so these would become glassy links. And so at the ground level, we need to explore that more to see if we connect through or if we allow a, a break, and you go out the door at the ground level, across that way and then into a door to the next to keep that open for pedestrians to travel in the east-west direction. I, I'm taking note of your comments here, and I think we need to explore that and see if that's a possibility.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, if I lived in that northwest building, I'd love to be able to walk to work, right? And if I had a job either across the street or, or to the east, it would be after a long day, you know, to walk through and not have to go all the way around the building would be really nice. The other walkability question I have is from the front version, front of the building. And again, if I'm coming in, if I'm walking to work, what is that experience going to be like? Is the sidewalk along that curved driveway going to be safe and accessible? And if I am coming from across the street at the hotel, for instance, or if I'm coming from an office, office building to the east, how easy is it going to be for me to come across Seventy-Seventh Street and, and into the building? So thinking of that, yeah. So we've got the driveway there and how that interacts with being able to walk on the sidewalk. I'd like to see that just as comfortable and inviting as driving up. So if I had an elderly relative who lived there, we could drive up and drop them off. Or if I was walking to work, I would feel comfortable just in the same way. So those are my, my two comments. I, you know, with the, I looked through the guidelines, and, and this does, is written out in the comprehensive plan as a two-hundred-by-two-hundred square blocks, like in the other parts of the Southdale District. It feels different here. I'm, I'm not as insistent on having that, but it does give a sense, it is a good guideline for sort of what it feels like to walk and, and feel that things are to human scale when you're trying to navigate through a plot of land. And so I, I like those cutouts that break the buildings apart. It helps with that feeling of not being so overwhelming, a big wall of, of building. But I would like, I know, and there are security issues for apartment buildings, but I would like to think if I lived in one of these apartments, it would be easy for me to walk around there. You did ask for our, our guidance on, on the connection to the park. I love this path on the east side. I think it would be great to walk. It'd be a very happy place to live. It'd be a happy place to visit, and I, I like that, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness you've put into that and also into all the sustainability. I'm excited to see your checklist. That's going to be really cool. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Jackson. And then on to Member Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I echo a lot of the comments that my colleagues have made and that the planning commission made as well, a lot of good comments. If you could put up slide number four from the packet, which is the one of the broader area, maybe back there. That one right there. So to amplify on some of the comments some of my colleagues have made, you know, one of the things that this slide really highlights is what an opportunity you have along Seventy-Seventh Street, because you're going to be first, and you get to set the tone, you get to, you get to really, whatever happens here will, will set the table for what happens all the way up and down Seventy-Seventh Street over time. And so, you know, I, I agree with all the comments about the challenges with the elevations and the, and the long wall, et cetera, but, but I just highlight for you what a, what a great opportunity it is to create that kind of signature place that can also, as Councilmember Anderson said, you know, it's really going to provide access. We, we don't have access to the park right now from Seventy-Seventh, and this will provide at least pedestrian access to the park. And to answer your question, we're working on it. We've got a plan for the park, but we don't have any money for the park. Working on that. We just had a meeting last week about efforts to make that happen. So we are working on it, and it is a real priority for us, but, and having more people here would help that as well. So I like the residential use. I like the configuration, the way you're embracing the park that, you know, when we looked at this before, there was a lot of cars between the building and the park, which didn't make much sense to me. So I love the, the transition from the building to the park. And then the more you can do to make that a great place on the east side as well as maybe on the west side to get back and forth for pedestrians from the park to the, to West Seventy-Seventh. And then think about, you know, how it's going to interact, how are people from south side of Seventy-Seventh going to get to your place and get to the park? And how, what's that interaction like? How is this? Part of the reason I wanted to put up this slide is it, it shows you that it's a, it's a centerpiece of a much broader area and can really leverage a lot of that, those other And then, you know, to the, to the two-hundred-by-two-hundred block notion that Councilmember Jackson raised, it is a, I think that's part of that challenge with that four-hundred-foot front. Is there some way to make that feel like it's not as massive? And so that's really a design issue that I think you've got to wrestle with, and I can't add much more than everyone else has. But otherwise, and I, I like, you know, the affordability, Councilmember Anderson mentioned that eighty percent AMI, you know. One of the things that I've been talking a lot about on housing in our community is, is affordability is an entire continuum, and we should have options for folks at places all along the continuum. So I, I welcome having something in that eighty percent range is really, I think, would really help fill a need. So I think you've got a great start, and I look forward to seeing, seeing how it evolves.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Sutton. I hope these aren't, these comments aren't too redundant, but I think you're off to a, a great start, as well as Member Sutton points out. There's some very thoughtful things that have been done here. In no particular order, with that same slide still up, I would say that loading that height towards Seventy-Seventh is a, a good thing. Almost doubling the permeability is really an extraordinary accomplishment, and this is just sketch plan phase, as you work on this notion of how to create, really, what you, what, I think Mick Johnson characterized it as the ecological framework for how, how the built environment interacts with nature is really going to be a significant thing here. And as Member Sutton points out, you're going to be setting the tone for what else happens along Seventy-Seventh adjacent to the park, and so we're really keen about this, working on this together with you. The notion that you ought to be able to access the park on the east and west sides of your buildings, I think, is really critical. It reminds me a little bit of, if you're down in South Beach where my brother, brothers-in-law have a place, as you, as you go across Collins Avenue, you think about that as Seventy-Seventh, there's all kinds of places between buildings that there are easements on private property for the public to be able to access the beach beyond and, and the boardwalk beyond. And I think you've got to think about that the, the same way. And then on Seventy-Seventh itself, the way the sidewalk is sketched in, it's behind the bulkhead, and I think we've got to think that through a little bit, too. Either if it's going to stay behind the bulkhead, it's got to be wider than a conventional sidewalk, I believe. But of course, being able to accomplish some of the things that we talk about in the design principles, having a, a double layer of trees, maybe you can do it the way you've got it set up here in the, in the schematic, but give it some thought as to whether you can pull that off with pulling the sidewalk back a little bit more, too. It's complicated because you've got that, that elevated drive-in. And Member Jackson mentioned that you need to be careful how you interact with, with pedestrians, but pedestrians have to be mindful, too, of, of where they are, and cars need to be careful coming in and out of that elevated driveway. I actually think it's quite a unique feature and could be extraordinary because you're actually moving traffic up away from pedestrians as you climb that elevation to the, to the front door in the port cochere. So I think that is some really interesting possibilities. At first, I was a little bit off-put by the fact that you've got such a challenge with that long front, but the fact that you've created, you know, call it those butt ends of the building sticking out there, you've created kind of a minor C, breaking up the, that building front with that articulation is really helpful, and you may be able to create some really interesting aspects there. And I think actually the change in elevation from the street to the port cochere will help you with that, and it might not make the, the length that you have to run so, you know, so off-putting. It's a five-hundred-by-five, a five-hundred-foot square site. I, I don't embrace the idea at all of the, trying to live with a two-hundred-by-two-hundred-foot block here. To me, it's a different setting than actually over in the, in the Pier Southdale District between France and York. I view this in a totally different way. As I mentioned earlier, the continuity between parkland and the new developments will really be important, not only how you enhance social connections, but also just the way the creek interacts with private property. So you have that seamless sort of connection that we've talked about from time to time in the past is, is really something I think that's important, too. The, let's see. The parking strategy, I think you've got an outstanding parking strategy, the being able to park it the way you're suggesting it'd be parked, and being mindful of Member Pierce's cautions about dealing with water. I think we've had this conversation before, and that there are some modern technologies that allow you to, to face that issue and still park it the way you're intending to park it, which is, I think, really an appealing part of this whole development. So I want to reinforce that idea. The U-shaped footprint is a great model for consideration, I think, for not only this development, but future developments along Seventy-Seventh. The way you've copied said articulation on the east and west sides of the buildings, I think, is really important to break up that, that single plane, and I think you've done an effective job of that. So the integration of open spaces is back to where Mr. Gunsbury was in the first place, I think. How do we want the building to connect to the park? How do we want the building to connect to the street? I think you're off to a very good start. How are we going to address ecological, they're not really collisions, but they're interfaces, I think, that we need to be thinking about, too. And, and then the parking we talked about, I, I just think, too, I think you're off to a really, quite a thoughtful start, as I mentioned at the beginning, my comments, and I'm eager to see where you go from here with respect to further building design and the interaction with the park and the street. So thank you very much for, you know, really being sensitive to what I think you've learned over time about what we want to accomplish together with any development partners that we have in the city. We're in this together. We're trying to do things for the Edina that are going to be here for a hundred years, and we want to do things that we're both proud of. And you're off to a good start on creating that level of pride and distinction, I think, with respect to this particular property, Mr. Gunsbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland.
Thank you.
So those are my comments, and I, I hope they were collectively of, of value to you, and we'll look forward to seeing you back here with us again.
All right. Thank you, Edina team.
All right. Thank you. And then we're going to move on to the next sketch plan that Kerry Teague has as well, and that is Forty-Forty West Seventieth Street, which is planned as a senior affordable development, kind of right behind kind of right behind the vitamin store on, in Kinderberry Hill on, uh, on Seventieth, right by the roundabout. Uh, Seventieth and Valley View. So Director Teague.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the coun, of the, uh, city council. As mentioned, this property is just west of Seventieth Street. The proposal here is to tear down the existing office building and build a three to four story senior affordable, uh, project, one hundred and eighteen units. It would be seventy-five units an acre consistent with the com, with the comprehensive plan with underground parking. This is a site that would, that does, held by the Edina Housing Foundation. Similar to our Amundson project, they, uh, solicited, um, developer help. And Loopie Development, Development Partners, Steve Minn, was selected by the Housing Foundation. And Steve is here this evening to present the project. So with that, I will turn it over, uh, to Steve to introduce his development team and present the project.
All right. Very good, Director Teague. Thank you. And Mr. Minn, welcome. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Teague, and members of the council. Appreciate the invitation this evening and, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to introduce our project to you. Um, I am Steve Minn with Loopie Development, but we have a fairly large team from Ekumen as well. They are our partners in this project. And so let me just take a couple of moments to introduce the project concept to you. We're a, we're a hundred and eighteen unit, one hundred percent affordable, uh, senior project. Uh, as Mr. Teague indicated, the hu, the Housing Foundation selected our team, both us Ekumen and Loopie Development, as part of an RFQ process. Uh, I think part of the reason that the team was selected is we were willing to adopt permanent affordability, which is a very unique concept. Most of you who are familiar with affordability know that, uh, there's usually a term limit, twenty, thirty years. We're looking at a ninety-nine year permanent affordability project here. So briefly, let me tell you a little bit about our team. Uh, Ekumen Development is one of the twenty-five largest nonprofit affordable housing developers in the country. Loopie Development is one of the twenty-five smallest developers in Edina. We're only five people, uh, but my bride and I have, uh, raised our children here in Edina for the last twenty-two years. We're actually in Mr. Overholz's grandparents' house in, uh, Indian Hills. Uh, we have partnered four times. This will be our fourth collaboration with Ekumen. We've done projects in, uh, Minneapolis and we're doing other projects in Minneapolis. And our team tonight, uh, includes, uh, Ann Stanfield, my colleague, who's the head of business development for Ekumen, uh, who will give you an overview of the project. Zach Rosnow from Pope Architects, uh, and Brian Wordeman from Kimley Horn, our civil engineers, and also helping us with some of the stormwater design. So I really don't want to take too much time, uh, burdening you with, uh, other than the introductions. I want Mr. Rosnow to get into the outline of the project and then we would be happy to entertain Q and A from both the staff and from the council as to how we're proceeding on this proposed project. So Zach, why don't you take it away?
I'm muted. Sorry about that. All right. Introductions are easier off mute. Uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, members of the city council, uh, I'm Zach Rosnow. Uh, I'm a senior project designer with, uh, Pope Architects, as, uh, Steve mentioned. Um, I'm excited to show, uh, your, our project concept here and, and kind of take you through, um, our idea that, that we prepared for sketch plan. Um, we can start here, uh, as the slide advances, uh, sort of with the general, uh, context, uh, of the neighborhood. Uh, this is at the corner of, uh, West Seventieth and Valley View Road. Um, I'm sure you all are very familiar with the site. Um, we've got the Cornelia neighborhood off to the west, uh, and, um, of course, this is just to the, um, west of, here we go, of, of France, France Avenue. Kinderberry, uh, is adjacent to our east and then Slant Concepts up to the, to the north. Um, as we get back to the site plan here, we take a little bit closer look at, um, the site. Uh, we looked at a number of, um, site factors. We wanted to make sure it addressed, uh, a number of the parameters, uh, including solar, vehicular, pedestrian orientation, um, and general overall massing, uh, was, was very important to us. Um, we're in, uh, in looking at the Greater Sautel Dale District Design Guidelines. Um, we're in Transition Zone One, uh, which means that, you know, we'll be transitioning from the single-family residential, uh, of Cornelia neighborhood, uh, into the more commercial district and ultimately over to, um, the higher density at, at France Avenue. So we wanted to make a, um, um, project and create a, a, a building and environment that was, uh, contemporary and, and still uniquely Edina. Uh, there's a number of, um, site features here that I'll let, uh, Brian from Kimley Horn get into a little bit later with the rain gardens, uh, and the, and the parking circulation. But essentially we wanted to, to drive off of Seventieth, uh, there was less traffic, uh, on that side of the roundabout. Or, I'm sorry, off of, off of Valley View, um, more, less traffic there, more traffic off of West Seventieth. Um, our program here generally is, uh, is eighty, twenty mix of one bedrooms, eighty percent one bedrooms, twenty percent, uh, two-bedroom units, um, as Steve said, we're a hundred and eighteen units. Uh, about a hundred and twenty parking spaces, twenty-five of them will be, uh, on the site. Uh, and we've mixed, uh, the units, uh, in, in throughout to, to help with views and, um, and create a little, a nice little mix. Uh, our elevations are, you know, at sketch plans, we're generally, uh, fairly schematic, but we wanted to create a building that, uh, really embraced, um, daylighting. Also had a number of, um, um, nice, um, features such as, uh, the stone elements that we held towards the roundabout, towards the south and to the, um, west. Uh, we had our, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not, but, um, in this west elevation, uh, we stepped down from three stories down to two stories, uh, toward our interior courtyard. Um, that's to help allow daylight, uh, to come through a naturally daylighted many spaces as, as possible. Uh, our east elevation is, um, of course faces France. And, and the idea here is, um, since this is our, our tallest facade, um, the top part of this, um, this darker metal, the, the dark portion is the metal, uh, would be sort of a feature element. It would be some, um, feature metal that, that would sort of announce itself from France Avenue and, and from a distance. Um, and could, could bring people to, um, this area and, and create a sense of placemaking. Uh, along with that idea, um, we want to, to embrace the idea of, um, art. So this metal facade could be, um, could be interpreted as, as a piece of art. We're gonna have an art gallery and art space, um, down here in the two-story sp, uh, portion of the building. And then out in the corner towards, um, the roundabout will have some sort of sculpt, sculptural or, um, art display out there, uh, as well. Uh, as Steve said, the project is going to be a, a hundred percent affordable. Um, and we'll talk a little bit about that, uh, following up here. But, uh, we just wanted to incorporate a, a variety of income levels and, and household types, um, within this, within this project for, of the Edina community. Uh, this rendering and the next rendering, I know there was a little bit of a concern about, um, the sidewalks being right on Valley View, Valley View. Um, we'll go back when Brian, uh, when I pass it over to Brian here. We're actually back off of, uh, the street about four feet and we have a, a site section that'll, that will show that. But the important thing to focus on with some of these renderings is, um, how the rain gardens are front and center. And for us, that provides an opportunity for, uh, education for the public. You know, as, as we get our, our rainy vents, um, this will, they will fill and dry out. Uh, and that change and having them sort of front and centers is a nice way to, um, we think, educate about how we're, how we're dealing with rainwater. So, um, I think I'll go back to the site plan here. And, uh, Brian, maybe you can talk a little bit more about, um, circulation and, and rainwater?
Sure. Thanks, Zach. Um, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, my name's Brian Wordeman. I'm with Kimley Horn and Associates. And we'll be the civil engineers, uh, and landscape architects for the project. Um, as you can see here on the screen that Zach is sharing, um, from a site circulation perspective, uh, the southern two accesses, uh, we're proposing a one-way circulation, um, for a surface parking lot, which is primarily going to be used for, uh, guests and visitors of the facility. Um, there will be a port of cochere, uh, on the, the building side there along the west elevation. Um, then the, the northern driveway access is going to be a ramp down to the lower level, uh, parking area, uh, which will be obviously primarily for, um, those folks that live in the building. Um, and, um, so the accesses, as Zach had mentioned, are, are proposed off of Valley View. Um, just due to more limited traffic numbers allow for easier accessibility in and out of the site. Um, from a stormwater perspective, uh, in our meetings with the neighborhood, this is obviously a, a very important, um, thing in the area. There are some, uh, existing flood concerns to the northwest that we were made aware of by city engineering, as well as some current concerns that were raised by residents. Um, this proposed project, uh, will incorporate the rain gar, rain gardens that Jack had, uh, mentioned along Valley View Road. Uh, those will be linked in series with a underground stormwater management system, uh, which will provide enhanced, uh, quality rate and volume controls, uh, for the stormwater from the site, which would be a drastic improvement over what's out there today. Um, additionally, uh, with the stormwater VMPs located on the west side of the, or west side of the site, um, that will allow for, uh, the potential of any existing drainage, tailwater concerns, um, to, to fill the system, um, potentially and ease the burden on the neighborhood, um, from what it's experiencing today. So we anticipate a, a significant, significant improvement, uh, from stormwater quality, uh, on the site. Uh, and then as Zach had mentioned, um, sidewalks, uh, also came up during our neighborhood meeting. This overall plan, you can see, uh, there is a boulevard along Valley View Road and Seventieth Street between the street and the sidewalk. Uh, and then there's also been, um, some conversations as to the width of that sidewalk, um, and potentially increasing to allow for, um, better pedestrian circulation, um, in and around the site. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Zach.
Yeah. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Wordeman.
Um, I think maybe, uh, Ann, if you want to talk a little bit about the, uh, the function and the program of the building?
Great. Thanks, Zach. And, um, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share this project with you. Um, I am Senior Director of Business Development at Ekumen. As Steve mentioned, we are development partners on this project. Ekumen will also be the manager of the building when it opens. Um, Ekumen is, um, not only a developer, but we own and manage over forty, or over forty, um, senior housing communities in four states ranging in scope from, um, independent living to skilled nursing, memory care, assisted living. So, um, we are excited to, to, um, serve seniors in Edina. We don't have a presence in Edina currently and being, um, a metro-based, um, home office, uh, we are excited to expand our reach of serving seniors in our community. Um, so, um, I think as Zach mentioned, the project is a hundred percent affordable. It is one hundred and eighteen units of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. Um, and they are affordable, ranging from thirty percent to eighty percent AMI, um, which is great, um, you know, that we can serve, uh, a variety of folks, um, especially in Edina, um, where there's very limited options for affordable senior housing currently, um, specifically age-restricted. Um, this would be available to seniors fifty-five plus. Um, and, um, another thing that we are excited about in Ekumen's approach to projects is really making them project-specific and location-specific. Um, for, not just for seniors, but for anyone, this location could not be more exciting for housing, given the proximity to amenities, um, walkability, um, amenity-rich as it relates to services as well as, um, entertainment. So, um, for the target population, um, this will be a great walkable site, um, to access those amenities. In terms of creating, uh, location-specific programming, Zach mentioned some of the arts programming, which, um, we know is an important, um, component of, of, um, programming in Edina and interest to the community. Um, in addition to that, we have reached out and are partnering with a handful of organizations to develop, um, again, site-specific programming, um, based on the needs of the population, uh, at, um, uh, within Edina. So we have, we will be partnering with the Edina Chamber of Commerce. We're working on what that partnership looks like, um, as well as Minnesota State University, Mankato, their Edina campus. Uh, Ekumen has a partnership with them already at, um, our Mankato campus. Um, so we're excited to bring programming and educational programming, volunteerism, um, and such to, to this community as well, to really make this a special and enriching community for seniors of Edina. Um, in terms of design and, um, planning for, for this specific population, I, I think, you know, we have, we're proposing a very nice balance of, um, of design, uh, elements that are specific for, um, a fifty-five-plus population to ensure their safety, um, handrails in the hallways, lighting, extensive lighting, um, building amenities that meet their needs, um, a drop-off area. Uh, uh, however, we are also providing, um, amenities that are, that are very, um, compelling in terms of lifestyle. So balconies on many of the units in unit washer dryer. So, you know, I think, um, bringing a, a long-term affordable building to Edina, um, that is, um, programmed with the residents in mind, that is locally specific. Um, you know, we're really excited about that opportunity. We think it's, it will add a lot to the community and, um, we look forward to hearing your feedback and answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Stanfield. Uh, I'll take it back to, uh, Mr. Minn or however. Do you want, uh, any more input from any of the members of your team, Mr. Minn? Are you ready to stand for questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if, uh, before we do that, I just want to make, if I may, two or three more points just so that the council and you have, um, a perspective about some of the energy-efficient elements in the design. We are proposing a PV solar, forty, forty KW solar system on the building. We have, uh, as Mr. Wordeman pointed out, a rather complex stormwater management system under the surface parking lot. We believe in providing the same quality amenities in our affordable projects as we do in our market-rate projects. And so for that reason, this building, with this design, not only do we have the materials that you're looking at in an appropriate mix, but our interior uses, a community room, a fitness center, uh, as Ann has mentioned, uh, some art, uh, making spaces. Uh, we are also hoping to Uh, we are also hoping to have a guest suite available for people who need to have a family member stay over. These are things that we would put in our market-rate buildings and we would do no less in our affordable. Uh, the last item I want to add before we take uh, any of your questions would be that our, our main objective is to have a step down to the west while still having sufficient economies of scale to qualify the project for the, the limited amount of dollar resources that are available to do affordable housing and still provide a nice-looking package on the outside. So we took some feedback from the neighbors who wanted us to have as little as two stories on the west. We feel this is the right mix where we stepped to two in a, in a couple of spaces, but for the most part, we're three-story to the west. And four stories or more to the uh, to the east. We think this design of this building accesses the streets correctly and provides them the highest modicum of access and safety for both pedestrian and for the type of audience that we're serving. And we did take some feedback in particular from the community about orienting the building and we would be happy to have your feedback about how we've oriented that. So, Mr. Mayor, with those comments, we'll stand for questions and feedback with your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Min. Uh, and we will start those council feedback uh, comments now. I'm going to ask, uh, I'm going to go in reverse, uh, ask Member Staunton to go first this time. Member Staunton?
I figured there'd be a payback.
Uh, trying to adopt the uh, Sharon Ellison model.
Sure.
For sure. You can't predict who's going to get called on next.
There you go. Keeps our brains supple, right? Um, so uh, I don't have a lot of comments. My biggest, um, I actually think the height fits nicely into this transition zone that the design experience guidelines in the district plan discuss. Um, but I am um, curious as to the, the orientation of the building. I know Mick Johnson had um, kind of suggested maybe flipping it around the other way. I assume that would then call for access from Seventieth Street. And part of the reason I say that is I think that this, this um, this leg of Valley View between Sixty-Ninth and Seventieth there could end up being part of our kind of western promenade. And we've, you know, we've had a, not long ago, we had a, a review of um, a potential project from sixty-six hundred to sixty-eight hundred France, which also backs onto uh, Valley View Road as well. And so, um, and I, I, I'm being consistent by suggesting we try to kind of create a boulevard feeling there as opposed to um, a more car-centric feeling. And so that's the reason that I'd like to see us explore the possibility of orienting the building in a way that puts the parking behind it instead of along that Valley View corridor. And there's a real opportunity there. It's not quite as wide as it is once you turn the corner at Sixty-Ninth, but um, but I, I, I'd be interested in your, in your thoughts on that. Otherwise, I think it's a, you know, what you're doing is a nice-looking building and, and I think the scale fits very nicely and the use fits very nicely in this particular zone and is consistent with the district plan and the design experience guidelines.
Thank you, Member Staunton. Um, let's go to uh, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, Mr. Min, I want to uh, I want to congratulate you on your thinking here. Um, I, there has been, I heard discussion earlier, I, I read Mick Johnson's uh, uh, notes. Um, but I concur with your perspective on access from Valley View onto that site. Uh, over time, Seventieth will become very busy. And uh, you, I mean, the nature of your residents will entail, you're going to have more calls. You just do. And so, uh, access in, if it were from Seventieth, would be difficult. And potentially even, um, it, it, you could create a, a dangerous situation on occasion. So I, I think emergency access in from Valley View uh, solves all those problems for you. Um, buildings of this nature, in my experience, um, you have visitors. You have adult children, uh, you, especially weekends. Um, there's going to be traffic there as well. So I think, a- again, bringing it on a value view makes sense to me. Um, I'm sensitive to uh, Member Staunton's comments on uh, the boulevard or creating a boulevard experience here. Uh, at the same time, in, in looking at your plans, uh, I think you've been um, very thoughtful about stormwater management here. Uh, and how you handle that and still bring the buildings forward, um, uh, is something to think about. Um, it's a point and something to think about. Um, uh, if you did that, uh, then again, access to the building becomes, that, that draws a question mark around that. Um, so, uh, the, and opening, uh, by the way, in my opinion, to the west really, I, I think invites interface, uh, you know, from the residential neighborhood. Uh, I, I don't find that uh, isolated at all. Uh, the residential neighborhood, the Cornelia neighborhood doesn't need to look at a wall. And so I think that's um, that's very useful as well. Um, my, my, my only real concern, and I was kind of surprised that Mick Johnson didn't note it in his comments. Uh, I, I heard uh, your civil engineer touch base briefly uh, earlier on, on the uh, the west Seventieth uh, setback. Uh, I think I did. Um, and, and what I note here uh, is as we address walkability of the project and into the community, the only north-south access is, is that one. Uh, this whole area is limited uh, in terms of north-south access. Your residents, if, if they were to walk, would, would, they, they won't be going on to Sixty-Sixth. They, 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 they will come over Seventieth, they have to. Um, and so, that setback, and I know that's, you know, you're, you're, you're pressing the limit here on the site itself. I understand. Uh, there's quite a bit of support in the community and from this body on this project. Uh, and so I, we're trying to get units in there. Um, but I, it, I would love to see more attention given to that. And how that becomes more walkable and more accessible. I mean, y- your own illustration shows a resident with a walker and a resident on a walker in December, uh, with snow management along Seventieth with I, you know, I, I just think you'll want to think about that a little bit more. Um, I'm not as concerned about the, uh, the east uh, uh, facing while I know that's a lot of units and I know it faces the parking lot. To me, um, that is a, a reasonable concession to get the quality of the development and especially if we can find a way to, to, you know, create a, a, a better setback on Seventieth. That, that to me is a good trade-off. Um, and you, we don't know what will happen there ultimately, uh, on the, on the north-south, on the east side of that. So there could be something a lot different there in ten years. We don't know. So, um, there's that. Let me see if I had anything else. The building materials are pretty much as you, as you picture them, I presume. So, um, that I think could be very dramatic, actually. Uh, you've got a fifty-five, I heard uh, from Ms. Stanfield, you've got a fifty-five uh, limit there. So that's, that's good. I, I expect in your experience, Ms. Stanfield, that you find that your residents are actually somewhat older uh, than fifty-five. Fifty-five is an entry. Do you use sixty-two ever in, in your project?
We do. It depends on the type of financing that we have for our project. Sometimes, um, you know, with, with HUD financing, we're limited um, to certain age restrictions. We appreciate when we have an opportunity to open up our housing to a wider um, age range of, of um, tho- of older people. Um, it just makes for a more vibrant community. That said, I would say, you know, our average age is higher than the fifty-five, certainly, um, in our uh, senior affordable buildings, um, you know, which again, um, they're higher, but the, we will not be providing healthcare services as part of the program for the building. So it is really for um, you know, independent um, seniors.
How do you address congregating?
Uh, we will not be providing congregating.
At all. Catering? Nothing? Okay.
We have not looked at that, no.
Okay, alright, okay. Um, uh, I guess last comment um, is uh, the, the idea of um, I, I guess it would be visually at least, public art on your southwest corner. That's a, that's a very, very good idea. Um, that becomes so visible on the roundabout and the traffic that'll be going. Uh, especially uh, east on Seventieth. I think that's a great idea. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Anderson. Uh, let's go to uh, Member Pierce.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, next time, you know, we'll have to let you guys go first because you don't seem all that excited about your project. So, um, I'm excited about it. I think you guys have done a, a nice job. Um, I applaud you um, in your use of the guidelines. Um, I like the idea that you're thinking about um, other activities that you can provide within the community. Um, I just had a couple of, of thoughts and I'm sure that you considered these. Um, so this is, I'm going to give you some feedback from uh, some uh, seniors in our community and things that um, they have expressed that would be important to them. Um, and one of those, um, it's great that it's a hundred percent affordable and um, um, geared towards that senior community. However, uh, lots of our seniors have expressed that uh, they would prefer like multi-generational living. Um, and so this thought that, that your vitality uh, comes from having a mix of age groups within the same community. Um, and so, um, if there, I'd ask you to, to maybe think about uh, ways to accomplish that, even if all of the units are senior units, when you think about um, other activities, things like that. Um, is there a way to bring uh, a flavor of vitality from um, using a multi-generational approach? Um, this one I thought was kind of funny. My wife and I were talking about this uh, the other day. The um, eighty percent of your uh, units are single-bedroom. Um, and so I, you know, we have three daughters. And I said to my wife, uh, you know, when we moved to senior living, um, we just need a condo with one bedroom. And she looks at me and says, "Well, that's not going to work. We have three children. Where are they going to stay?" And I said, "We'll pick a condo that's close to a hotel." But clearly, um, she's thinking eighty percent single-bedroom. While I understand why you have that, um, that, as your highest occupancy. Um, I do think, uh, maybe thinking about having two bedrooms um, or the idea that you talked about having um, a guest house or a guest unit um, would be um, something that I think is a, a very uh, creative idea. Um, and then the last thing I would, would mention, um, we, as a council, we talk quite a bit about issues of flooding, um, stormwater management. Um, and so, you know, I, I think that if um, you can find a way to abate the issues of, of impacting the residential or the single-family home neighborhood to the west of how you're going to be able to manage water and maybe potentially ease uh, issues for the single-family homes um, uh, to the west of the building. That actually would be a plus, right? It'd be awesome to have a developer come in and say, "This is the, this is the project that we're going to do. And oh, by the way, here are benefits for those residents that are living in that area," and be able to list those. And one of the top ones that we talk a lot about is um, our management of, of wastewater and trying to manage that particular issue. Um, and so I, with that, um, oh, I, I did have one other um, question. Um, if I, I lived, if I'm looking at your site map, your site plan, um, uh, to the west of the, your building, I think that is Southdale Road. And so if I lived in one of those houses that backs up to Valley View, what would be my um, experience if I'm sitting in my backyard on the deck? Uh, what would be my experience with your building uh, being completed? And with that, I'll, I'll, I'll yield back my time.
Alright, thanks, Member Pierce. Uh, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Min, anybody wants to answer that question about the sightline for somebody living over on Southdale Road towards your building? And I, I'll, I'm going to make a comment about that when I get somebody my turn, but.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Pierce, I appreciate the uh, the comments. Um, I would say that uh, once we complete the elevations and we come back for a formal application, we'll do uh, axiometric views from the west looking east. So you'll get a perspective. The current office building, even though it's uh, it's effectively three stories, uh, what those neighbors now see. So we would be only slightly higher uh, on the west side and we'd be actually lower than what they see on the west side. That's the whole purpose of what we call this current design. We refer to it as a letter J. Uh, so we think it would be equal to or less imposing uh, for residents from the west. Uh, and I don't know if you want me, Mr. Mayor, to comment on the other questions or we wait till the end when we have some feedback? Uh, maybe I'll just answer just that one question for the moment.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, we can certainly do that. And then um, we'll go to Member Jackson next.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to, this is a very exciting project. And, and I'm really, I love the team you've put together and this is really neat. But if you could, Mr. Min, if you could go back to that picture. Actually, I have a question for Mr. Teague, for Director Teague on this. Um, we've talked about a western promenade and I was trying to go through the plans figuring out where it would go. It looks kind of like uh, in the Southdale Experience Guidelines, it would go where Southdale Pet Hospital is now, kind of behind those buildings. But is this uh, idea of a western promenade just completely up in the air now with no um, uh, particular spot lo- identified yet?
Yeah, there's no specific location. When we were contemplating development of this full block from France to Valley View um, north and south, we contemplated it running through the middle of this block. Uh, but that said, it could be along Valley View Road uh, somewhat similar to what Councilmember Staunton was talking about. So there's not a set in stone, this is where it's to be. It'll kind of depend on as development goes.
Okay. Alright, well, if, if it's possible to preserve then a sense of boulevard along Valley View Road. Um, I think with the rain gardens, you've got that kind of going. Um, so that's good. The other question I had for you was um, to go to, off of Member Anderson's comments. If you've got the picture of the front door, I can't exactly see how people will leave the building and then walk towards France Avenue. Um, I see a sidewalk by that white car there. Um, but I'm a little concerned that there's an awful lot of parking lot and how you get out to the sidewalk. We see people walking there. Um, but I want to make sure that this is fully walkable. Um, so at the front door, how do you get to the sidewalk?
I think if we put the site plan up instead of the elevation, there's, there's an interior sidewalk and there's a portico share that's attached to the building. So, there's a pathway you can see. Zach, I mean, you could move the cursor and just show the pathway.
So to the north of the parking lot there, the, okay, okay, that's, that, I didn't, couldn't understand if that was the sidewalk. That's great. Okay, so you've got two sidewalks really.
Yes.
That connect. Okay, so walkability is really important and it looks like you've gotten that. I just want to, again, um, thank you. And um, we've got um, Mr. Rosenau, I love the use of natural light. I want to thank you specifically for that. I, I think that's such an important thing. Um, it makes the site cheerful and, and just uses this wonderful open space to light it. Uh, so thank you very much and I'm excited about this. Thanks, team.
Thank you. Thank you.
You.
Well, I, you know, I think all of our council members have indicated, uh, the level of enthusiasm in our community for the Senior Affordable Housing Project since the Edina, uh, Housing Group, uh, Housing Foundation found the property for sale. Uh, a couple of calls I've had from neighbors on Southdale Road were worried early on about the fact that you may have four stories on Valley View, that they'd be sitting on their back patios looking at four stories, which is kind of the Mick Johnson version of, of what, uh, they were worried about. And I, I really think that you have it oriented the right way. I think the, the J concept, open to Valley View, is a soft transition to the single-family neighborhood. I haven't, uh, had anybody call me or write to me since you, uh, had your meeting with the neighbors, or they've seen these plans where you've got, uh, the height moving from west to east, elevating as it goes east. And I also think it would be, um, a little bit more dicey working with, you know, you think of Kinderberry Hill right to the east. If you tried to put the access to the building on the east, in addition to the problems that I think Member Anderson pointed out about access off Seventieth, now you're also coming in right next to the place where they're, they're full of preschoolers. And I just think that's a bad idea, too. So I, I didn't agree with Mick Johnson's comments at all. I thought it, you set it up exactly the way it would be most appealing to the neighborhood. Uh, yeah, you've got that surface parking in the front, but, uh, to Member Anderson's point, too, I think there will be guests coming and going, visiting, uh, friends and relatives there, and I think that's important to have that access. The rain gardens are a great, uh, addition, uh, to the landscaping and also to the practicality of stormwater management. And I thought Member Pierce raised an interesting issue there in terms of how effective can we make these rain gardens and that underground system that you're going to use? What will be the impact? Uh, will it lessen the impact to the neighbors to the west on the other side of Valley View? Uh, will they have less stormwater to manage than they had from the ACA building? That's an interesting thought. Uh, you do have some long runs of, uh, of a single plane, I think, or near single plane. And I'd like to see you deal with that a little bit. I think the open part of the J facing west on those two arms, things are probably fine there. Uh, but on the Kinderberry Hill side, uh, where you've got a single plane running north to south, I'd like to see some more articulation there. And I think it'd be better served up by some more articulation on the north side and the south side, too, especially as it faces Seventieth. I think you want that moving in and out a little bit. Uh, would you re, would you tell me again what the materials are? Is it, is it stone, glass, and metal? Is that what it is, Mr. Min?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it's a combination of brick, architectural-grade, uh, metal, and, uh, cement fiber, as well as the glass.
Okay, alright, that's helpful, because it sure looks good, you know, and, and I think to your point, you've tried to make, uh, the buildings that are affordable, whether it's market, uh, or whether it's, uh, for, uh, all-age demographics or seniors, look like they're market-rate housing. And I think you've done an effective job of that, and we wanna make sure that we maintain those high material standards. Uh, the design work from Pope is always good. Uh, and so, Mr. Rosenau, I would say you got a little challenge ahead of you in dealing with some of that single-plane things, and let's, I'd like to see some more articulation when you come back. The a hundred and eighteen units, I think, is a home run, uh, and the way you configure them based upon funding, uh, availability, financing, and, um, and what you project in terms of use, I think that's fine. That's a market decision that you have to make. I thought Member Anderson made some really good points, too. Uh, this is kind of his world, uh, and, uh, all in all, I think just, uh, a great use of the property. You're off to a wonderful start, and I look forward to seeing what we, uh, what we'll, uh, have from you next. And then I think, Mr. Min, you had a couple of questions you wanted to answer.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you for those, uh, glowing comments. We appreciate the enthusiasm. Uh, obviously, our team is very excited. We, we pursued this project with, uh, vigor. Uh, I wanted to address Councilmember Pierce's comments, uh, primarily from a financial perspective. It's hard to blend multi-generational, uh, in the, in the project itself and still maintain the kind of, uh, age restriction. That's not really possible under the financing schemes in the Fair Housing Act, but we're a block away from Cornelia School, and we're next door to a daycare. Intergenerational will be part of our programming. That's what we want to accomplish. And I want to assure you, Councilmember Pierce, we will, we will focus on that. That's, that's something that we wanna, uh, achieve. We do that at some of our other campuses with Ekumen, where we have more land to work with. We just have a very tight site here. And so we had to make some decisions based on what the Housing Foundation told us they needed. Uh, we had to concentrate on one class, and that's senior. But programming-wise, I think we'll fill the building with lots of young people. I think that'll be a touchstone of what we accomplish here. Uh, the other comment I wanted to make, uh, was that, uh, we have a C design in response to Mr. Johnson's comments, and we haven't shown it to you tonight, because we haven't found anyone that really thinks it's a good idea for traffic or pedestrian safety. Uh, and I'm a smart enough salesman to stop while I've already got the sale, I guess, so I'm not gonna argue to why we didn't, you know, show you the C anymore than just tell you it's more complicated for parking, it's more complicated for pedestrian access, and it hurts the cul-de-sac Seventieth connection at the roundabout in terms of, uh, emergency vehicle access. So this was very purposeful, and we appreciate the feedback you're giving us on the endorsement of orienting to the west. Uh, we're excited about this. We're gonna be back in front of you folks, uh, obviously, for the, uh, the formal application, but there's also gonna be a financing component, and so it would be remiss if I didn't mention to you that our financing plan, uh, will require some city participation, but the way we've set this up with the unit count and the design, uh, it should be a pretty minimal ask. I think the bond markets and the tax credits are more robust now based on the most recent law, and that's good for this project. We can, with the age, uh, limits that we have and the, uh, the dissemination of the brackets between thirty percent AMI all the way to eighty percent, we're funding a lot more for this project than most affordable projects do on our own, and that's good news for everybody. Thank you for your time tonight, and if you have more questions, we're happy to stand for it.
Thank you, Mr. Min. I, I forgot one comment I was gonna make, and that was, uh, from Miss Stanfield. Uh, Ekumen's reputation precedes you here, and I think, uh, uh, it's a nice partnership that we're seeing, and, um, the possibility of having Ekumen here, we'll see how the, the whole process goes, but the, the possibility of having Ekumen, uh, managing, being, being a partner in a piece of property in Edina is a, is generally a nice thought. There's, there's process ahead of us yet, as I say. Uh, we've got, uh, um, preliminary and final plans to deal with, uh, and there will be people that have concerns that will need to be raised, but I think we all think you're off to a, a, a good start. It's not, uh, prejudging the matter in any way. None of us are doing that. We have a responsibility to the public that we serve to deal with this matter, uh, in a transparent and appropriate way, and we will do so. But I think you're, uh, it was nice to see your presentation this evening. Also, for those of you that are new to the council, uh, Member Pierce and Member Jackson, uh, we are, um, pleased to have, uh, two residents, uh, in our community that were former Minneapolis City Council members, Denny Scholsted and Steve Min. Uh, both chose to, uh, take up residence in Edina, and now, uh, a couple decades passed, and, uh, we're pleased to have them here as residents of our community. So that's another, just a little tidbit of information for everybody.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else, folks? Alright, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we are on to correspondence petitions. Uh, has anything come in, Manager Neil or Kirk Anderson, that we need to be mindful of?
It has not.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the, um, advisory communication from the Energy and Environment Commission, um, I would like to move the question on their, um, resolution that they brought forward. Or raise the question. Is that...
If you wanted to move it, I'd second it.
I will move it.
Alright, let me get out of here and find it here.
Okay.
Oops, went too far. Be back in a minute. Maybe you wanna just state the motion, Member Jackson?
Yes, it's, it's a resolution to support Clean Cars Minnesota. And as we are looking at, um, you know, having to fund flood mitigation, the urgency of addressing climate change continues to be front and center, and this is one way in which we can help show our community support for wanting to reduce emissions from, um, transportation.
Alright.
And it sounds, it sounds timely as well, because there are rules that are being taken out shortly.
Alright, I'm, I'm there with you now. I see that the action requested is the approval of the Resolution of Support for the MPCA Rulemaking to Adopt the Clean Car Standards. We got a motion from Member Jackson and a second from Member Staunton. Any further discussion? Alright, roll call, please, with respect to the motion.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pierce?
Aye.
Councilmember Staunton?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Uh, the resolution is adopted, and, uh, we are now supporting the MPCA Rulemaking. And we get reports on this at the TAB from time to time. It's, it's, uh, I think it's really essential, uh, that we have a MPCA member on the TAB to be able to report out on all the different things that they're working on. They're doing some very, very good work. They're doing some good work with the, uh, settlement monies they got out of the Volkswagen litigation in terms of expanding the capacity for recharging electric vehicles, uh, on a system throughout the state. Uh, providing some funding for, uh, uh, cleaner equipment, electric, electrified school buses, uh, and other, um, other work that they're doing with some of those monies that are coming in from time to time. I think it was forty million total. So, Member Jackson, thanks for making that motion.
And I would, I would note that just this weekend, GM announced that their, their plan is to go to tailpipe-free emission by 2035 on all their vehicles, so this is going in the right direction.
Well, you were in there early with them.
We got two of them.
Alright, uh, we did get an aviation noise update. Uh, Manager Neil and I got it. I don't know, Manager Neil, if you circulated to council members, or if you wanted to just report out on what, uh, former, former Member Brindle sent to us.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I thought I would just give the report tonight, if that's, uh, if that's okay.
Alright, please do that.
Um, so this is, uh, directly from, uh, what do we call her now? Commissioner?
No, we call her, uh, Noise Oversight Committee Member.
NAC, Member Brindle.
NAC, NAC.
The FAA heard from our represent, representatives in Washington DC that aircraft noise, uh, concern is a top priority for Americans, and as a result, the FAA developed a survey, uh, that tries to take into account what people are experiencing. Uh, the survey is designed to gain knowledge about aircraft noise and exposure and annoyance. It's a comprehensive survey. You can take the survey at the, at the, at the website for MACNOISE, which is MAC, M-A-C-noise, N-O-I-S-E dot com, MACnoise dot com. And the public comment period for that survey is open until March fifteenth. Uh, the Noise Oversight Committee is scheduled to meet in, uh, its next regular session is Wednesday, March seventeenth at 1:30 PM. The NAC will meet in special meeting on, will meet, have a special meeting on February seventeenth at 1:30 PM to discuss the survey and approve a letter from the NAC to the FAA about the survey, its processes, and its results.
Alright, and Manager Neil, if you hold on that last one, I'll report on that one. I've got another, I've got the more detailed information on the appointment.
Very good, and that's all I've got for the, uh, noise, airport noise report.
Okay, and I'll hold my comments for, uh, uh, mayor and council comment. Any questions for Manager Neil? Man, why don't we circulate that, uh, all of our council members, too?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Um, in case they wanna, uh, uh, get some of the dates and times or some of that information she provided for meetings. Uh, and then on to, uh, council comments, and, um, let's start with Member Anderson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything tonight.
Alright, very good. Member Staunton?
The only thing I'd mention is picking up on, um, the last item we dealt with on the, on the clean cars business. From a process perspective, I think it'd be interesting, maybe this is a topic that can squeeze into the retreat somewhere, um, from Member Pierce, Member Jackson, about sometimes these advisory commission reports get kind of lost in that space, and the commission thinks they're asking us to do something, and we kinda sometimes don't see that they're asking us to do something. So I just wanna make a note to kind of check in on that process issue at some point and think about if that's the best way to get them. I know we've had this discussion from time to time, but with the, with the new configuration of our council, maybe we should revisit it again. Sure. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Uh, Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this week we saw a story in the Star Tribune about, um, solid waste in the metropolitan area. And the MPCA is, received four requests to, um, increase landfilling. And so when we adopted, uh, composting and co- organics, um, recycling here in Edina, some of the comments were, "Well, you can always expand and everything." But I wanted to highlight the, the importance of doing organics kind of recycling, because we're gonna have to see some expanding landfills, and there's a equity issue to that, uh, environmental justice. Which communities have to bear the brunt of our waste and, and stuff that's going into the ground? If we don't expand these landfills, it goes to either Wisconsin or Iowa, so our neighboring states are having to house our garbage. So there's a real cost to our solid waste, um, disposal. So I wanted to, um, it's, it's both, when you use a landfill, there's greenhouse gas emissions and also the risk of groundwater contamination. They put linings in, but no linings are perfect. Um, it, the quote was, "It oozes toxic fluids." So, it is, uh, unpleasant, and so I, I wanna applaud, um, the past city council for adopting organics recycling and encourage our residents to take advantage of this. We've got, um, we've put about six hundred million, or six hundred and seventy tons of, we've diverted from landfills into composting so far. So as far as numbers go, it's been very successful, very low rate of contamination. And now we've got smaller carts available for smaller households, um, so we can, uh, try and accommodate some of those houses that don't have much, um, garage space or, or anything. But we're trying to make it work, and I just wanna encourage people to take advantage of this, um, program, because it's so important, because landfills are expensive, nasty, and, um, and costly to our environment and also to our pocketbooks. So, thank you.
Okay. Member Pierce? Do we have any?
Um, I did, yep, I didn't have anything this time, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just one thing for me, and that's a follow-up, uh, on Mary Brindle's, uh, report to us. We got notification, uh, we had two Edina residents, actually, maybe four Edina residents that had applied for, uh, the position that was held by Katie Clark Sevan from Edina, uh, as the Commissioner for District C and the Metropolitan Airports Commission. Uh, none of those Edina folks were selected. The person selected is a guy named Jim Lawrence, who was a graduate of Harvard and Yale, uh, some years ago now. He was the Executive Vice President for Northwest Airlines. Old Northwest Airlines for two years back in the nineties. Uh, he lives in Minneapolis now. Uh, he is the Chair of Lake, something called Lake Harriet Capital. It's a family-based investment office, and then he's also the non-executive chairman of something called Lake Harriet Development that does, uh, technology-enhanced, well-focused, healthy-living communities. So, uh, he is going to be our new representative, and we will want to reach out to him and invite him to a council meeting, and so we can meet him. And I will, uh, send him an email. I got his contact information, um, from the Chair of the MAC, and we will, uh, see if we can't get him to a council meeting in the near future to meet everybody. So, uh, that's it for me. Manager Neil?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I have one thing tonight, and that is that we are, uh, we are in the process of preparing our, uh, 2021 Quality of Life Survey. And part of that process is to, is to let, uh, elected officials know, let the five of you know that we are ready to kind of hear your ideas, um, of, of what you wanna know, uh, from this survey. The survey is, uh, about... The survey is about three quarters to two thirds, kind of standardized questions that we, that we ask every year. So they're longitudinal questions. So we, we're now building up a good bit of data about how we're performing on standard questions from year to year. But somewhere between a third and 25% of the, of the survey is a little different every year. And if you have some questions that, that you are interested in, please, this is the time to let us know that. We, we want to firm up the, the survey, the survey content by the end of this month. We do have an upper limit in terms of the number of questions we ask. The longer the survey gets, the less households that really complete it and give us a full, a full response. And I would ask you to, if you have ideas about questions, let me know what those are. But don't spend any time trying to write the question because the, the vendor, Polco, they, they insist on writing the questions. So we will, if we know, if we get a sense of what you want to learn, we can, we can work with them to produce the questions that elicits those responses. And so I just want to give you that heads up and let me know as, as soon as you can. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Manager Neil. That prompted any other thoughts from council members? All right. Some nice work tonight. It's, it's nice to see continuing interest in the city of Edina and development opportunities in our community. So is there a?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't make this comment. It really would be nice if on our edinamn.gov website that we would recognize that it's Black History Month. And so we could, the city has done a lot over the past year to recognize some of the social, socioeconomic and racial issues. It'd be really nice to have something up there to just recognize that.
That's a wonderful thought, Mr. Pierce. I think our council would agree with you. So.
Take care of that.
Manager Neil, can we do that?
You bet.
Let's get something up there. Is there any special sites that you've seen, Member Pierce, anything in particular that we need to make sure that we get on there that's a link to some other organization or organizations?
No, you know, I, I, there are some things out there. What I can do is tomorrow morning, I'd be happy to connect with Manager Neil on that.
Okay. Or Director Benarot, too, I think.
Our Director Benarot, yeah.
We have been, Jennifer and her team have been working on kind of standardizing the way that we recognize some of our more notable holidays and events that we commemorate and, and recognize. So this is part of that process so that we have them ready to go. And, and we have some Black History Month events and, and recognitions that we are going to do. And so you'll be seeing more of that coming up.
Awesome.
Member Pierce, I'm so grateful for you bringing that up. Thank you so much. All right. Anything else from members? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We get a motion from Member Jackson and a second from Member Pierce to adjourn the meeting of the Edina City Council on February 2nd, 2021. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, with respect to the motion. Clerk Allison?
Councilmember Jackson?
Hi.
Councilmember Pierce?
Hi.
Councilmember Staunton?
Hi.
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. We stand adjourned.
Good night.
Good evening, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.